I'm Ron Smith, Chair of the Sidewalk Committee.
Jim Sims, Member, Present.
Kate Rosenbarger, Member. Here I am.
Okay, thank you. I think last time what we did was we set priority that we wanted to see in estimates on, I think it was the top 10 projects or something, something at that point. So why don't we, unless the city staff has anything in a preliminary sense they want to speak about, why don't we display the projects and let's go ahead and get right into it?
And I'm not sure who from staff may be speaking about the information that you all worked together up. I don't know if you'd like to share a screen or I'm happy to display the spreadsheet that I received just before the meeting. So Roy, Neil, Beth, I don't, I don't know who might be ready to speak to those project numbers that you all put together.
I'm happy to do a share screen. Would Neil or Roy be fine walking through what the numbers are? And I did also put, this Beth Rosenbarger Plan and Transportation Staff, I did also put together some of the mapping metrics we talked about last time. So I'm not sure when that would be appropriate to share either if you want it before or after the pricing or cost information.
Beth, what would be most informative for us?
Great question. Um, I'll go with after, if that's okay.
Oh, sure. Sure. You have the expertise. So that'd be fine.
So I would say we could have Roy or Neil walk through the cost information. I can present the mapping things and then because I think those can combine for a discussion about what's next. Does that work?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. If you want to share the screen and then Mr. Copper or Atten, whoever wishes to walk us through it a little bit, that would be really great.
I guess I can start and I'll ask Mr. Rain to help out if necessary. Neil Copper, Engineering Department.
Thank you, Mr. Copper.
The, so the spreadsheet setup, I mean, with the projects along the top are projects that were already in progress. And then kind of the middle is the the new projects that you asked for estimates for. And then at the bottom is a section for traffic calming, case there is funding allocated to that. And then there are different columns, of course, for design, right of way acquisition, construction. Give the usual caveat, these are all high level estimates at this point, number subject to change. So the two that are in progress that Council could choose to fund, the South Walnut Street sidewalk, which needs construction funding, it's already been funded for design. And the Adams Street sidewalk, which needs, it needs the remainder of this design funding. There's a note in that column, but it needs $25,000 to finish out the design. Then it is right away funding and then in the future year, I wouldn't recommend it for this year, it will need construction funding. And then I don't want to like go through all these individually, but I'll point out a few things to you. The projects within the top 10 that were already either constructed or funded, we just grade out those lines to make it a little bit easier to see that basically we recommend not paying attention to those lines. And you'll notice there, but there's more than 10 there. There was confusion on a few fronts, you know, partly the, there were a few different prioritization lists. Kind of last minute that went to the last council meeting. Partly we were unsure if, when you said top 10, did you mean top 10, including ones that are already funded or knocking those out and taking the next top 10? So I don't know what the exact number here is. And I want to point out the item for Gorley Pike. If you read the text description, it's listed as Kinzer to Old 37 or something like that. But in the previous mapping, if you open up actual the map that was created for that that project, it shows a different section of Gorley Pike. There was two separate sections, one further west on Gorley Pike that actually doesn't have a sidewalk. Whereas the text description does have a sidewalk and a section on Old 37 that doesn't have sidewalk. So we broke that out into what we thought was the most logical, the gaps in the sidewalks. We assume that was the intent of the council, but we're kind of guessing on that one. And I'll also point out Mitchell Street down there at the bottom, because it was such a long project, we took the liberty of dividing that into two phases. So I think it'd be better to tackle it that way if the council was to pursue it. Instead of trying to do it all in one phase. Yeah, that's the, kind of the big picture view. Beth, do you want to add anything to that or Roy?
Roy, you first, if you have anything.
No, I think Neil, you covered it well. The only other thing that I would mention, I guess, would be, I think we had some comments on the Range Road Discovery, the new road.
Roy, I think you're alluding to Range Road. There's some question as to whether we should have done the estimate for the west side of the street or the east side of the street. Basically, the history there, the, there's, there's ongoing projects to construct multi-use path on the the east slash north side of the street as it curves around that are in progress that would be logical to connect to in this section. But doing that project would have been well beyond the scope of something that Council Sidewalk can fund. So we, we thought maybe sidewalk on the west side of the street, but the complications there are, we don't have, we don't have any right of way there. It's all IU property. And in the past IU has expressed that they are not interested in a sidewalk there. So they may be unwilling to be a participant in that. They may, it may turn out that they are, but we just don't, we don't know at this point. And also that would be on the opposite side of the street to connect to the improvements that are already planned and funded for construction. So a little bit of uncertainty there.
All right. I'll add with the traffic calming categories, something that is new this year is the recently updated traffic calming policy. And so while we separated out South Hill Drive, the challenges, it actually would, or South Overhill, sorry, Drive. Any project has to go through a set process, which means either staff led or resident led. So instead of maybe highlighting one traffic calming project, our recommendation is looking at funding or putting some funding toward the resident-led traffic calming and greenways program. And that way some set funding would go toward the outcomes of the resident-led traffic funding requests. And also probably what's different is I did put staff, we put recommendations in here that obviously can be removed, but just to provide a starting point and after our analysis of the projects. I think that's it on the sheet unless anyone else has something to add for now.
So the, where you say, where you are indicating staff recommendations, those are the priorities from your department?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is, is it appropriate then other committee members, Mr. Sims, Ms. Rosenbarger, do you have any questions regarding the list and the presentation?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. I'll jump in here. With regard to the Kinzer Pike project that we were discussing, it says going to the Old 37 road, I guess, is that the beginning of the road that goes down, winds around to go down to Lower Cascades? Is that Old 37 there?
Yes. Old 37 is the part that connects to college, but the actual connection, Old 37 College to Gorley. Yes. So that's the section from kind of Miller Showers up to Gorley on there.
Okay. I guess my question is on the top five projects that we have listed here. If there is nothing listed in the right of way category, does that indicate there is actually no cost for that or no estimated cost?
Yeah. At, at this point, if, if I didn't anticipate a cost, it just is blank. So.
Okay. And I'm sure we'll talk about this later and maybe not even today, but with the the Range Road project with regard to the east and north portion. I think it's important, and of course this will be later conversations, from a connectivity standpoint, to cross over the street. I'm sure that that's workable. But we have difficulty with getting permission and right away from the university. But wouldn't we think that connectivity on the east and north portion to go on around that curve, would that, do we consider that important, I think, as part of this project? Potential project?
Assuming that's a question of staff.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely. I do think that's a very important connection. There's a number of unknowns there right now, unfortunately, including NDOT has a project coming up in a couple of years to replace the intersection at 10th Street and it's not called Range Road anymore, Discovery Parkway.
Right.
Which kind of basically stubs out multi-use path on the east side there. So we've got kind of like the southern end and then up at the corner, we'll pick it up. I do think it's high priority to fill in that connection. There's uncertainty as to whether the, the housing just to the east of there will redevelop. Right now it'd be a very challenging project to build. It would be very expensive. Frankly, Council Sidewalk Committee, I don't think would be able to afford it within a single year. But yes, it is important.
Okay. And my last question, with the, the top five projects that are listed, the total project costs roughly $250,000. And that's to be funded or approved funding for this year. Is that correct? And, and does that mean that 250 or 249, 955 of the 330,000 is already basically spent? So it leaves what roughly $80,000 for this year?
I'm not sure I understand the question. When you, when you say the top five.
I'm sorry, that's listed on the, and you have to, I don't have control of the sheet. Go back to the, to the left. Yeah, Maxwell Street, 14th down to Adams and okay, oh, no, okay, I'm with you. That's not the total project cost. It's not a cost for the total, all the projects, as for individual.
Correct.
Project, individual cost. Okay, okay, I'm with you. Okay, I'm with you. Thank you very much. That was a little bit confusing to me, but I'm with you. Thank you.
Also to clarify real quick, the top three on the list here, Maxwell 14th and Moore's have dedicated funding. So I believe Ryan Neil highlighted them to say these were funded projects through Council Sidewalk for at least a portion of the funding, if not all of it. And we're just noting those on the sheet.
And perhaps if I can jump in here, I, I know each year the committee likes to, has typically liked to look at where they've, where money has gone in the past. So I think the two sidewalk projects, the South Walnut Street sidewalk and the Adams Street sidewalk have been designed and are awaiting either right of way acquisition or construction funding. And I think that column F, Beth, am I right that that column F would list the amount of money needed to move both of those projects towards completion? Am I reading that right?
I guess in column F right now, we just have a recommendation, a recommended amount of funding that would move those forward. But
I see for Adams Street, it's not the full cost of the project, I see.
Correct, because, because right of way acquisition is needed in that project and because design still needs an additional allocation. And also because those two steps need to happen, then, and also sorry Neil and Roy, if you would rather take this, that, that will take additional time. So it makes sense to just say we wanted, we would recommend doing this next step or these two steps together and then construction would happen in a later year.
So staff is recommending $210,000 towards construction of the South Walnut Street sidewalk. $66,000 towards Adams Street to complete both the design and the right of way stages of that project. And then looking down, it looks like $41,000 is what you're recommending for, I'm assuming, design of the Dunn Street sidewalk from 15th to 16th Street.
That one includes the estimated right of way as well. So design and right of way on Dunn.
And then we're, what is that total? Does that leave an amount 13,000 is what you're recommending for general traffic calming projects that go through the, the new program that was just put in place?
Yes, the resident-led portion of it. And that was, in disclosure, that was based on the remainder. It wasn't, so it was looking at these top projects first.
And these are all funds, pardon me for jumping in there, these are all funds then are, will be committed for the 2021 sidewalk, construction and design projects, right?
Yeah. So what I would say is, this is staff making a recommendation to you all as a sidewalk committee, as you know, to what we're recommending in terms of how to allocate, but you know, then you all discuss and decide and go from there. But yes, so that, that would be funding allocated for this year in order to take those sort of described next steps, which would then leave you with a design, we try to think of constructing plus design in order so that the next time you have something already designed to be ready to construct and that there's always a balance between that a little bit. And so with this set allocation, it would be constructing one project and getting two projects designed ready.
Great. Understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I add something?
Yes.
And this is a staff and I think I'm pretty clear on this, but of everything that we just talked about as far as projects and design with regard to 2021 funding and all the way down to the traffic copy net we discussed, with all those projects combined that exhaust the the budget for 2021, those funds, is that correct? Yes. Okay, I'm looking at the bottom. Okay. 330,000. Okay.
Ms. Kate Rosenbarger, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
To ask or comments you want to make?
Sure. Thanks. So with the traffic calming, when we passed that new process, it was sort of projected, right, that we would do $50,000. But there's just not money pretty much for that. So you're recommending 13,000 for the resident-led traffic calming. Is that right?
That's correct. I'll just add it, it's very tricky. And I mean, you could look at changing the allocation, switching some things up, of course, but yeah, that was the recommendation at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Beth, was there a second part of this that you were going to talk about some maps or something like that? Is it appropriate to do that now?
If you all are ready, I am.
Okay. I'd say go for it.
I'm sorry. It'll take me just one second to switch this. Okay. Do you see PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Okay. So based on our conversations in the last meeting, we basically took a lot of data from the census, mainly American Community Survey and estimates based on the American Community Survey to do a little deeper dive into different areas of the city. With like geographic data like this, the smallest unit of measurement that I get access to easily or that I use for this is the census block group. So when you look at this map, the different colored areas are basically different census block groups. And what we did was we took a look at other ways that cities prioritize funding or where to invest limited funding in sidewalk projects or other similar projects. And we put together five variables, which I'll walk through. So each census block group would receive, within those five variables, each variable gets ranked and it receives a one to five points set. And then, so that makes the maximum total for any census block group 25 points. And the least you could have is five. And this is mostly 2019 data, which are estimates from the American Community Survey, not estimates that we make, but estimates that a statistics company puts together. And so these, based on those five variables, were the outcomes of that. And in this map, out of the five variables, the red would indicate the lowest score and the green, the highest scores, meaning the green areas are areas that we think based on those metrics, there's the greatest need in the population for further investment in sidewalks. And potentially the greatest likelihood that people would use them or the greatest number of people would use them. And I'll specify too, it's not to say don't want sidewalks in a bunch of places. Of course I do. This is simply trying to prioritize based on where we think money will go the farthest. So this just shows, in addition to the color coded breakdown, the actual number that each census block received. And the five variables that we used were the percent of the population within a census block group that is black, indigenous and people of color. The median household income, a rank of that. The median household vehicles, so that means the number of cars per household as a median for that census block group. The percent renter population within a block group and the population density in terms of being able to tell not just how many people live there, but a higher density of people generally correlates with more walking and a greater likelihood that they can use those resources. So with those five criteria, this is the whole breakdown of the city and a little bit beyond because census block groups don't follow the city boundaries exactly. So then this is just a map that overlays the sidewalk projects we were examining this year. I'll apologize because I only did the top 10 projects and should have checked in where I know that engineering colleagues did more, ended up doing cost allocations on more. So this just gives a picture of where those projects are and what some of the underlying demographic information is in that area in terms of the sort of priority rank. And this is basically a twofold priority ranking since we used the Excel sheet ranking that we've already been using and just took the top projects to look at within this criteria. And so then we've actually already discussed these funding recommendations based on it. So I just put them in here. And then I can go through each variable if you're interested. Or I can just let you know that I have a map for each of the five variables. If that's something you wanted to explore further. But I think for now, to keep it brief, I'm happy to just say they're here and I can answer any questions about it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Sims, do you have a question about what was just shown or any further questions?
Actually, thank you, Chair Smith. First of all, we, I'm not so, do we have copies of what's being presented today? I mean, can we get those?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to have my own copy so I could look at it further. Thank you very much. Now with these variables that we just talked about, and in a previous meeting, we talked about some equity issues. And you all revamping our criteria. So is this part of that process? And has the ratio and economic equity disparities or concerns been incorporated into what you're showing us today?
So, yeah, so twofold. I would say this is an attempt at moving closer toward an equity ranking, but it, we did not completely revamp the process because we had already started down the path this year. We thought it made sense to use the ranking sheet that you all, you know, had already reviewed in previous meetings and just, I guess, maybe gather some thoughts and input on a system like this. And so, so I would say, no, it's not completely revamped, but this just highlights some options in different ways or different filters we could use to think about moving forward. Second, so was this taken into account with the recommendations that we put together? Yes.
Okay. And we can expect a more thorough, deeper dive from your all standpoint as far as revamping or reconsidering criteria moving post 2021.
I mean, I think I would have to say I probably made my department head's final blessing, but I think yes, like we're pretty, pretty happy to move in that direction. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Ms. Kate Rosenbarger, would you, do you have questions that you are comments?
I don't have any questions for this part. Thank you though.
Okay. I, the question I have was, so the map you showed where there was the blue, which showed the priority level. Yeah, that one. So I don't know if I, you may have already commented on this, but were some of the projects that were selected, those were the blue? The indicated lines or?
Sorry. So the, the lines that are blue on here just show that the projects were requested by Council Sidewalk Committee and it's all 10 of the, sorry, I look over here because I have it on my other screen. It's all 10, it's the top 10 projects that are not, some of them are already funded. So it shows that too. So the light blue ones, like 19th Street up here is being built by a developer. 14th Street is funded. So some of those, the light blue means it's a project that we've discussed, but is already funded, but was in the top 10. And then the dark blue are projects that were in the top 10 that were requested. And then this magenta is projects that were funded for design last year, but you know, up for consideration for funding construction or not.
So, so will you, will you comment on, it looks like there the most, the areas that have the greatest need, if I understand right, greatest need and likelihood of use. And was there an opportunity with the top 10 that were on the list to have those designed in beginning the preliminary stages in the greatest need areas on this map?
Let me understand or make sure I understand. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Smith. So do you mean out of the, or can you restate it? I'm sorry.
Sure. Sure. We looked at that. We looked at that. The, the list and we had And we had those and they were, you know, top 10 or top five that, that your staff and you had recommended, staff recommended. Was there, does this map that we're looking at now, was there an opportunity to have any of those into the areas of greatest need and greatest likelihood of use? So did I, did I restate that okay?
I think so. I would say, we did, basically we took into consideration this map to say, out of the ones on the list, we think this is where we would put funding. So for example, Adams Street Sidewalk, is this, can you see my mouse moving?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is this number 65? So that's just the council sidewalk ID, I should have clarified. And it straddles, it goes through two census block groups. So one of those receives about a mid-rating and the other receives a medium-high rating or just beyond that. So we, that makes sense, we think, as a place to, to invest. It turns out, I mean, there weren't any that were in the top 10 that are in one of these red areas that we would say, maybe that's not the highest funding priority at this time. So we did take it into account, looking at them, we, in terms of what we recommended. So we did recommend funding construction for South Walnut and funding design for Adams. And this little bit up here, doesn't show up with the number, sorry, on Dunn Street. And that's again a medium-high level.
Right. So, so it, it means, what, what does it mean to me that the, there were none, and it, and it's just a question, that there were none recommended in the ones, the large green area? What, what does that tell us who are looking at it on this, from the sidewalk committee? If there are none recommended there, what does that mean to us?
Sure, twofold. It means that there weren't sidewalk requests in, in that area. So that is something about the system that we might look into tweaking, changing for the next year process. So it does rely on a request to be made. So for, we know this is campus.
Request is by the public, Ms. Rosenberg?
Yeah, so there are multiple ways that a request comes in. It could be a council member that sends it to council office. It sends it to us to add to the list or a member of the public. Or sometimes when something comes to our attention really specific, we will add it. But it is, it is request-based, so somebody has to ask, no matter who that person is. So that's one reason, we might not see any. And the other reason might be, they could be on the list, but they weren't in the top 10. So there might be some requests in there. And then another reason could be that there are existing sidewalks. But the challenge is, we don't also look at the, I guess, the comfort level of an existing sidewalk. So traditionally or historically, Council Sidewalk Committee has funded design and construction of new sidewalks, but not all sidewalks are created equal. So we might want to know if there are areas or if that's a consideration for the future. But it might also get to the point that that's a major street reconstruction project that's beyond the scope. So that became a lot of answers, but I would say there are at least three reasons that we don't.
I appreciate it very much. I just, I just wondered why and I thought that if anybody else was looking at it, they probably might ask that same question. So thank you very much for those answers. Anybody else have anything that they want to, to comment or question? I think it sounds to me like the next thing we need to do is ask if there's any adjustments to the allocations from the other staff members. And if not, then I think we can move to, do we move to a vote at this point, Mr. Lucas, or do we move to public comment first?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question before we proceed?
Yes, Mr. Sims.
Just a little clarification on my part. And I believe this would be for Ms. Rosenberg, Beth Rosenberg. But with the variables, as part of the rating system, is baked in there somewhere? Since it's not a separate variable, I think, the fact of non-existing sidewalks, where there are no sidewalks, where we need sidewalks or none exist. So is that baked into the variables? And is that somehow cross-referenced with some of the other variables in order to create a priority? And I think it's important where we have nothing existing with particularly with connectivity and some, you know, paid issues. So I guess my question is that where we don't have any existing sidewalks, and obviously that is a higher priority to put in sidewalks. Has that been baked into the ranking variables somewhere?
Yes and no. So there's no comprehensive way right now that a lack of sidewalk anywhere in the city is examined. And then the way that it might be, I might ask Mallory if she can, if there was any follow-up you have on this, in the prioritization list that we have and we've put together, there's like a metric about pedestrian level of service that attempts to measure elements of the street and the, I think, the need or benefit of a sidewalk. But there is no, and I say that because we do know that we have some streets that are like very narrow, very low volume motor vehicle traffic. And we might say in those cases, we're not, maybe we want to come up with it just a shared street model for that. But anyway, so I think the short answer is no, that's not a part of it. Maybe to the extent we're picturing right now. I mean, to the extent of our current process, like, but I think what, what we would want to see would include a level of need that takes into account, obviously, the lack of sidewalk. Everything in here doesn't have a sidewalk. It couldn't be on the list if it does. But then the street conditions as well.
Okay, thank you. Is it fair to say, as staff continues to look into criteria and revamp some issues, that this will be taken more into account with some of the reasons that you just stated? That'll be taken more into account to increase certain priorities moving forward? Is that fair to say?
I think.
And what I mean is if we have non-existing sidewalks in an area, but we need, and I understand there might be other variables with narrowness of the street and some other issues. But just based on non-existing sidewalk, cross-reference with some of our other equity criteria in the ranking total, is it fair to say that as we work more on revamping the criteria, that'll be part of it moving forward? Or part of the considerations, I should say?
Yes, I think we would work to have an all-city-wide sidewalks layer that does exist and then a sidewalk gap layer. And in ARC GIS, which is the program I use to make this map, do some calculations and such to, yeah, to look at, you know, to layer that information. So yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other concerns or questions from sidewalk council members or committee members or from city staff? All right, Mr. Lucas, help me out here. Is it time to take a vote on accepting the top five recommendations? Or is there something that we need to do? I'm looking at my agenda.
Sure, give me one moment.
Right now, I'm just going to say also, while you're looking, thanks to the city staff for doing all this excellent work and preparing this spreadsheet and map, maps for us. Appreciate it.
And this is the same spreadsheet with less information, but I filled in what I think is, is staff's recommendations here in this shaded pink column. And certainly if the committee wanted to adopt staff's recommendation as, as the committee's recommendation, it could do so with a motion. I would suggest possibly hearing from the public before the committee entertained a motion along those lines. And, and again, the committee is not, you know, bound to the, the exact recommendations from staff. The spreadsheet is set up so that if the committee wanted to see how any of the other projects might fit within the budget, we can quickly and easily swap numbers in and out to see how things add up. But if, if committee members are, are inclined to defer to staff's recommendation, I, I would suggest holding off on a vote, on a motion along those lines until after hearing from the public.
All right, then let's move to public comments. Should there be anyone out there in the public that wishes to make a comment? Please indicate by using the raise hand function and/or send Mr. Lucas a note and we will recognize you and let you speak. I think maybe, let, let's say we're going to give people two minutes to speak and say what they want to say.
And at the moment, I see two, two folks who have indicated they'd like to speak. First up, we have Greg Alexander, who should be ready to comment.
Please go ahead, Mr. Alexander.
Great, thanks. I'm Greg Alexander. About a month ago at a city council meeting, I pointed out that Dunn needs sidewalks to connect several new student-oriented developments to campus. Thankfully, that, that seems to be partially addressed here, though. I mean, gee, wouldn't it be nice to have sidewalks on both sides of the street? The next commenter after me at that meeting a month ago, you know, I, I don't think she was a transportation activist. I hadn't seen her before. I don't think she's at this meeting. But she knew, she knew. She said, "It's unfair to prioritize student sidewalks" because she understood that would mean waiting years or decades to build sidewalks in her lower-income neighborhood. And she was right. You don't have to, you know, you don't have to have a PhD in, in, you know, GIS to understand that we simply have a lot more crucial gaps, especially for low-income people who really will walk to the grocery store. And we're not going to fill them in. At the rate we're doing, it will literally take 50 years. So at least one of the committee members on this committee specifically cited sidewalk advocacy when they campaigned for reelection. Sitting on this commission, the only thing we're doing for sidewalks, each year you decide we won't build the vast majority of the worthy projects, which itself is just a tiny list of the gaps that we have. Sidewalk gaps are the rule rather than the exception for decades to come. Is that strong leadership for sidewalks? Are we honoring our campaign promises? We need to build more sidewalks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Mark Stossberg, who should be able to unmute.
Mr. Stossberg, welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Ron. I want to, I was very impressed by the presentation that Beth put together. I think it's a major update and I think it's a great direction to go in. So, so thank you. I think this demonstrates the kind of objective staff-driven process that we can use to both streamline the efficiency of our local government by making these decisions quickly and effectively and also with greater equity. And so I hope those of you who are council members will vote to approve the 2101 resolution tomorrow at council to dissolve the sidewalk committee. One of the, Jim Sims asked about the request-based process. And one of the things that we, the city does have as a resource is a best-in-class full LiDAR scan inventory. We know where every missing sidewalk is and we know the grade and condition of all the sidewalks. We don't need council members to tell us where those are. But what I think the staff does need is some more time to integrate that kind of GIS technology into this decision, this metric, this matrix. And I think we can do that, get that done within the next year. I don't mean to speak for the staff, but. So thank you, and I look forward to this. I, the vote tomorrow, we, if we want to move forward with equity, we do need systematic change. The idea that council member providing useful input, we have the 17 years of data to show that, to get to where we are, which was, we didn't have an equitable process. So the process needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stossberg. Mr. Lucas, do we have anyone else that wishes to comment?
No, I don't believe so.
All right, council members or committee members, do I have a motion or any comments or adjustments to the list?
I'd, I'd like to do that. I just want to be clear on what we're approving with as far as the projects. Can someone clarify on if I were to make a motion, what we would actually be approving today? Based on what I, I just want to be clear. I think I understand it, but can we make sure?
Ms. Beth Rosenberg, can you clarify that for us? Oops, sorry, Ms. Kate Rosenberg, do you have a question?
I, I had one question about before, I think just before making a motion, if that's okay, Councilmember says, just a clarifying point, I think I, my muted, no, okay, misunderstood or did not understand with Mr. Alexander's comment. Can someone weigh in on that, a staff member about the Dunn Street? I think you're specifically talking about Dunn Street Sidewalk. If anyone can explain that to me, uh, thank you.
Ms. Beth Rosenberg?
Yes, Beth Rosenberg, planning transportation. The Dunn Street Sidewalk proposes doing a one-block sidewalk between 15th and 16th Streets on the west side of the street. I don't actually know offhand both sides of the street super well. I can tell you that would fill a one-block gap on the west side of the street to have a consistent sidewalk path. At least from farther north of 17th Street, all the way to get you around Dunn Street and down to Indiana Avenue. So east side of the street currently has some older multifamily developments that seem to predate our current, well, the current UDO and the previous UDO and have non-conforming parking situations that are accessed from the right-of-way. And so right now, we proposed using the west side of the street for the sidewalk gap. And I would say we would be very interested in looking at the east side of the street. I would say longer term, especially with the transportation plan recommends a protected bike lane along this corridor that could connect up to other facilities, both north and south. So that's something we would want to look at in a larger context along the stretch of the corridor. But it would be, I think it's fair to say, I'm sure there would have to be some interaction with legal and zoning and really figuring out how to address the non-conforming parking that's on private property, it seems, but accessed from public property on the east side of the street. Does that summarize it, Neil and Boy? Yes, that's the tiniest nod, Neil. Thanks.
Did that, did that answer the question?
Yeah, that helped me. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, and Ms. Beth Rosenberg, would you like to respond to Mr. Sims' question about if we were making a motion, what, what to accept your recommendations and your staff's recommendations? What, what does that mean?
Well, yes, so if council went with this recommendation, then you would be funding $210,000 toward construction of the sidewalk on South Walnut Street that runs just south of Winslow on the east side of the street down to, I believe, close to Ridgeway to fill a sideways gap in there. And that project you designed or funded, designed for last year, you would be funding the. the, providing money to fill in the needed, the rest of the design for Adam Street sidewalk. And also putting money toward right of way acquisition for that project as well. So it would be design plus right of way, be closing the design funding gap. And then would be funding design and right of way acquisition, hopefully for the 15th to 16th street. And I'm sorry I say hopefully because it's a challenge that things are estimates and we can't be sure about the cost. They are really good estimates from staff. We just know sometimes they, there'll be some wiggling in there. And then you'd be funding $13,000 toward resident led traffic calming projects. And Neil or Roy, please feel free to jump in if I described anything. Neil?
Just to add one thing, in previous years, the the committee has ranked their priorities so that as staff goes through and starts actually spending that money as estimates, if estimates come in high, we know what to do first. And that has been helpful for staff.
I'll add, if you choose to do that, you could consider that two of the projects have two steps in them. So both Adam Street and Dunn Street. So it could involve specifying, I guess about one of, I don't know, or how that would work, Neil, necessarily. Sorry.
All right, Mr. Lucas?
I also wanted to ask maybe Beth or someone could provide a bit more detail on how the $13,000, if the committee were to recommend that for the resident led side of the traffic calming and greenways program, how that would be used. You know, what projects that would be used for? Obviously, that would depend on what projects come in. Would it be a, an amount that you spread out across all projects that come in or just the first projects that come in the door? How would that be used?
Good question.
I'll start and then send it to Mallory. The first part is, we would probably still contribute some portion of the alternate transportation budget to supplement that. We're not sure how much right now. And the way projects would be selected would be through the resident led process, which is reviewed by the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission. I think, Mallory, could you describe further?
Yeah, so we, the way that the resident led process exists is we open the window for applications in January and then we have neighborhoods or groups of concerned residents put together a letter of intent for saying that they wish to participate in the program and they, and they want to have their project included in the in the process for this year. And so then, after the letter of intent is submitted, we'll have a general idea of where these projects are. And, and we can start pulling the metrics that we're using to rank each of these projects, which includes crash data for that area and it also includes census data in that process as well as getting speed counts, speeding count data for those areas if we don't already have that information. And so then from there, we will have kind of an idea of where do these projects lie in relation to one another? And so then moving forward, we can kind of be flexible with the money we're putting forth towards design of these projects, which will is essentially what I think we can expect for this year. For these, for this first year of our resident led process.
So it would be fair to say this money would, would be put towards the prioritized projects that have gone through the process you've just described?
Yes, for design, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. And again, I was going to make the same point that Mr. Copper made, that the committee in past years has, has ranked in order priority the, the projects and we've got four here again, the committee, you know, I don't know if the committee will want to recommend these same projects, but staff does find it helpful to know in what order the committee is prioritizing these projects. And I can try to find a way to break out the design and right of way for the, for the two projects that have both of those components. If the committee thinks it's necessary or if staff thinks it's necessary.
So I'll ask the other committee members, do you have an opinion on whether we should go ahead and rank that? And if you, if, if you do, then how would you like to rank them?
I think we'll have that discussion and I'll defer to the chair to lead that ranking process. But one question before we move forward that I want to be clear on. In sometimes on into the future, when the estimates don't meet up with the funding and there's been some decision making that has to be made moving forward. There's been the authority given, and Mr. Lucas, correct me if I'm wrong, that the chair can make certain decisions with regard to funding differences and availability. Is that still in intact?
Yes, the committee has an overage policy that applies and the committee didn't make any changes to that policy. Leave it allows for up to 20% of the estimated project costs to be shifted from one project to another, up to, I believe, a maximum of $45,000. Neil can jump in if I'm misstating that, but the chair can, can authorize those, those shifts from one project to another after consulting with other committee members. And I know staff has found that helpful to address situations that you brought up where estimates, you know, didn't match up with the actual costs, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So shall we talk about the ranking now? Mr. Sims, was that discussing the ranking, is that something that you believe we can do today? Or is that for a subsequent meeting?
That might be better served for Mr. Lucas, but I think with what's been recommended, I think this committee can rank them in order, I think, as far as completion. My thought there would be from staff, where are we along, you know, with design and right away in construction? Which of these recommendations are closest to fruition? And which may be farthest away, which would have some bearing on my prioritization? If that makes sense.
I'll start to answer that at least. So the South Walnut Street, which is, you know, the largest allocation that we recommended is just now starting design. I think they're doing survey right now. So realistically, we're not going to be bidding and knowing an actual mountain encumbering until, you know, the summer at least. So the other, you know, the continuing the Adam Street and starting, starting a new design project on Dunn. We would want to start that, you know, pretty soon. We want to start that instead of waiting and spending the Walnut Street funding. So it is a little bit tricky to even recommend a prioritization because I would recommend prioritizing that piece of construction high so that you can do the whole thing. But I also, you know, you don't want to sit and wait on that so that you can't start your other, other priorities. I guess. Yeah, I don't know if there's necessarily a clean answer there. It's likely that if there are shortfalls, we would recommend taking it from, you know, the right away piece of one of those, one of those projects, Adam Street, for example. And sorry, I'm just talking out loud here, but Adam Street could be a good one to prioritize lower because we've already encumbered a good chunk of the design, start that design, and it'll be a while until they even know what the right away cost will be. So that might be one that could be prioritized lower without delaying anything.
In your comments on Dunn Street?
Dunn Street, I mean, in general, I would want to start the design early, you know, if we start the design within the next couple of months. Then by the time we get to 2022, you're ready for construction and you have real numbers. So I wouldn't, I would guess I would put that one. Personally, I would put it pretty high in prioritization.
Okay, so it sounds to me, and I'm going to restate this so you, everybody can change my mind or disagree with that. It looks like that Dunn should be one over hill. So, so sorry, Adams should be two and Walnut, South Walnut should be three as far as priority list. And I'm going to ask out loud, does that appear that that it fits with everybody's thoughts on the project, committee members, or do you have different thoughts?
Can you repeat the listings that you just made? I'm, I'm sorry, no, I defer. Go ahead, Mr. Copper.
I was just going to say, you, you had listed Dunn as number one, Adams as number two, and then Walnut as number three. I was going to say you could, you could consider swapping two and three there, I think.
Right.
Just in terms of scheduling, I don't think that would cause us any heartburn. If you wanted to be sure that you could get a full, you know, construction funding for Walnut. And then Adam Street, the, because the right of way will come later in the year. It's just an option.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I'm listening to the experts to know what's going on here. Mr. Sims or?
I would say, well, I would just say thank you, Mr. Copper, because I'm sorry, did Beth have anything to add? Or Councilmember Rosenberger, I'm sorry, not Beth, Kate, Councilmember Rosenberger, yes.
I'm okay right now.
Thank you there. But one of the things, as Mr. Copper was speaking, I had kind of written my priority list and it mirrors with him with switching South Walnut and Adams. So is that Dunn is number one. Adam Street would be number two, South Walnut, number three, and traffic calming would be number four. And if that's acceptable, this committee, then I'm prepared to make a motion.
Does that reflect what's on the screen, everyone? Or was that, did Mr. Sims reflect that correctly or just like it is?
Perhaps I can, I can run down the, the list just one more time for clarification.
Please do, Mr. Lucas.
Providing funding and I'll go in order of priority for design of a sidewalk on Dunn Street from 16th or 15th to 16th Street along the west side of the road. That would cover design and again, these are rough estimates, but design and right of way acquisition for $41,000. The second prioritized project would be the South Walnut Street sidewalk along the east side of the street from Winslow to Ridgeview. That would be construction of a sidewalk for $210,000. The third project would be remainder of design and right of way acquisition for a sidewalk along the west side of Adams Street from Kirkwood to Fountain. And then finally, the remainder of $13,000 would go towards the traffic calming and greenways program for prioritized resident led projects. Staff can jump in if I missed, misstated anything, but I think that's what the, what I, what I heard the committee wanted to recommend.
Committee members, are we in agreement on that priority list?
Well, I, I think what I like to do, and not hearing anything else from staff at this point, I like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations as listed for 2021 with the recommendations from number one, two, and three, and four, as was listed.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you very much. Do we need a roll call on this, Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Call on you.
I'm sorry.
Committee, committee member Sims?
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Rallo is absent. Thank you, committee members. I do want to note too that the committee will produce a report that will go to council. And we'll need signatures from committee members on that report before providing it to council. Staff typically prepares that and it reflects the committee's deliberations over the past couple of months and includes the, the formal recommendation. So you'll, you'll get to see all of this in writing before reporting back to the full council.
All righty, did we do what we were supposed to do today?
I believe so. I, I think there's one other item of business.
Yes, sir.
That I, I may need your help thinking through. The committee sometimes is, is ready to schedule its meeting for the next year's funding cycle. I don't know that the committee will want to do that this year. But if, if the committee wanted to set at least a tentative date, it could, it doesn't need to. There is also the topic of minutes and whether, if minutes are produced, whether the committee wanted to delegate approval of minutes to the committee chair. That's been something that the committee has done over the past several years. And essentially the, the minutes, if, if they're produced, would be circulated to all committee members for review and comment before, before the chair could approve them. So if there's perhaps a motion to delegate approval of minutes to the chair after a period of review by committee members, that would be in order now. And again, if the committee is ready to schedule a meeting for next, I guess later at the end of this year, it could, but it doesn't need to.
Regarding minute approval, so moved.
Second?
Need a second, okay.
And I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Rosenberger?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
And I, and I might be stepping on toes, but I think the roll call will probably fall to you, Councilmember Smith, just for future reference.
Oh, thank you.
Go either, no, that's okay. It could go either way, but you know, I think that will be more appropriate.
Thank you. Do we, do we have an opinion on scheduling a meeting for next year? I, I think that's unnecessary at this point, but anybody have an opinion?
If we have an available date, I would like that to happen just as a placeholder, understanding that with the however we work out with the resolution 2101 may have bearing on that and make that placeholding date unnecessary.
All righty, would you like to look at a date for us, Mr. Lucas?
Sure. I think this year's committee process kicked off a bit later than, than last year. I think last year, if I can pull up, give me a moment. Last year's committee met for the first time November the 12th. That seems, I think the year before that, it was right around that same date. So first week, second week of November seems to be when the committee typically starts its process. I, I think the idea is that the committee has historically had three or four meetings and so fitting those meetings in before the end of, of the year allows staff to have the maximum amount of time for spending the money on, on the design and construction. So assuming the committee exists and, and functions the same way it has been up to this point, I would look at that perhaps first or second week in November as a possible timeframe.
Do we need a specific date, Mr. Sims, that we nail down?
He said the first to second week, so I'd say pick a date on there, probably preferably a Tuesday. Understanding it'll be tentative and we can smooth forward on that.
All right, give us a Tuesday, Mr. Lucas.
Tuesday, November the 9th would be the second Tuesday, November. And again, we'll, staff will reach out to committee members, whoever those committee members are ahead of that meeting to confirm that meeting day when we get closer.
Very good. Let's, let's pick that one and we can finish that off.
We need a motion for that, Mr. Lucas.
I think given the, the fact that we'll need to confirm that date, I, I don't think a motion's necessary. Staff
Ten-four.
Oh, that, and we'll, we'll confirm that as we get closer.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
This may not, this may not have any good of the order, but thank you for your leadership, Councilmember Smith on this. And I am also very happy and glad we could take into account some comments from the public. I think that's necessary and critical with some of the decisions as we move forward. So thank you.
Yes, and thank you to the city staff. It's always, always a great pleasure. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the comments from the public, too. Really helpful. So thank you all. I think we can adjourn, right?
Yep, move adjourn.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.